For council members, Councilmember Prees, Councilmember Dominguez, Mayor Prochim, McPharren, and Councilmember Josh Schultz. So first up is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Next up is approval of the consent agenda, which is the city council minutes from twelve seventeen two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is approved. Next up is the mayor's proclamation on human trafficking. And this is in the packet. Unless there's a desire, I don't need to read it, I don't believe. So any questions or concerns? I'll be signing that at the end. It is what we've signed in the past, the previous years, recognizing that this is a problem. Next up is item five, reports. And first up is our city engineer Leo Foley.
I will talk about well number two and Rainbow and Maxon project when we get to them in the agenda. And then before that, the wastewater treatment plant. We did meet with the city, we've met with West Liberty Foods, we have another meeting. So where we bring together kind of the improvement project in the rates with West Liberty Foods on Friday this week. And I think we're getting really close to having some pretty good numbers for everybody there. So that, 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 between the wastewater treatment plan improvements and then the rate study kind of coming together, things are starting to, starting to look good. And like I said, Friday, we're going to meet with Lee before the West Liberty Foods meeting and kind of go over. I think the CIP in my mind is done. We met with Adam and the whole group of leaders and kind of moved some things around. He hasn't seen it yet. I shuffled a few other things around now to kind of make, basically so the numbers get smooth. So it's not jump one year and then way down the next year. So I think we've got it real close.
Good.
All right, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next up, our city staff reports. City manager Gertz is joining us via audio visual because she's attending class at Drake. So city manager Gertz.
Good evening, everyone. Just real quick, from a report perspective, as I communicated last meeting, December slows down just a tad bit with projects. But again, our annexations have been sent to the state, so we're waiting on their approval. As you can see with the other staff's reports and with Leo, we've held several conversations and meetings over the water operations, the capital improvement projects. Recently, we went over with Wheelie. They're at the point with their project where we are looking at their sewer connection. And in addition to that, what's going to be coming up here is going to be the budget work, employee handbook work, and I will keep it short so we can keep moving on.
Okay. All right, are there any questions? I should have asked if there were any questions for city engineer Foley. Are there any questions for him? Are there any questions for the city? Oh, yes.
A question for myself.
Okay.
City manager reminded me, the extension, the west side extension sewer that's going to go behind Wheelie, will be coming to you next month with a set of plans and specs to get ready to bid that one, to be ready to bid in the spring.
Okay, all right. Are there questions for city manager Gertz? All right, the streets report is in your packet. I did have a question, Adam. And that's each month we get what the, how much garbage was disposed of and what the, how much recycling? And I just wondered, is there a standard for that?
Um, I have a running yearly sheet. I almost put it in there, but I didn't. I was going to wait until we had the final numbers for December.
Sure.
But I have, it's solid waste has gone down, recycling's gone up almost every year, so.
Okay, that's good news. Yeah, that is what we wanted.
I will make sure to put that in the next meeting on my report.
All right, thanks. Are there any other questions besides mine for Adam? Water and sewer report is also in the packet. Any questions? And police report. And what I noted in the police report that I was pleased with is that we haven't had to ask for county to do backup. That we've been self-sufficient in providing the policing for West Liberty. I think that speaks well of the department, so.
Yeah, it's one thing I've been very adamant on since I took over, is that this is West Liberty, that the West Liberty Foods will handle it. And the counties appreciated that because some of the things I first heard when I took to my office was that they felt like they were being a little overused, that they were more than willing to help. They thought you were speaking to the right on them, so they appreciated that you were solving our issues.
And numbers are higher over the previous year. So not only have we been able to do that ourselves, but we also responded to more incidences in the community. All right, communications report, any?
Can I say something?
Sure, absolutely. Yes, sorry.
I just wanted to say how appreciative I was by your whole squad chief. Because, you know, the last couple of months I've had to ask for assistance and your officers are so incredibly professional and helpful. And it's just a breath of fresh air, so kudos to you and your team, and thank you for doing such a good job.
Thanks. Thanks for reminding me to ask for further comments from folks too. Communications report, any questions or comments?
I didn't have anything from.
I don't remember seeing one either, so there's not a communication.
She's going to turn it in next time.
But I did, I did want to just reinforce, I appreciate all the department heads' reports that we've had so far. I think that really helps us see overall view of what's happening from their standpoint and how well they're working cross-working together.
Yes, there was, that was one of the reports noted, the backup of the departments. Good point.
I think it speaks volumes because since we don't sometimes have a lot of questions, but most of the things are answered in them. So I mean, spelled out pretty, pretty easily, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense to us, so thanks.
Okay, all right, thanks. Committee reports, there have not been any committees that have met. A couple of council members have asked me about this, and I'm trying to track down. Or Sherry and I have been working on tracking down information about what, what is listed for the committees. And I haven't been successful on how they're tied to an ordinance, nor have I been successful at this point in finding out a spell out of the duties, so that's being worked on.
Good luck, Mayor.
Thank you, yes.
Katie and I tried to find those too.
Oh, well, that's good. So any information that you have that helps us with the search is greatly appreciated because I know many of you have more, all of you except Tim has more time on the council than I do, so. Okay, we're now ready for item number six, the vendor voucher claims. There is a vendor voucher list number one in the packet, and it totals three hundred and three thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and five cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The, those opposed nay. The ayes have it, and it is approved. We are now to item number seven, public comments and/or correspondence. So first up are any public comments. Please state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than two minutes. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Next we'll move to city council members' comments and correspondence. So I'll start here on my right. I have nothing. Okay.
I don't, haven't seen either. I actually had a really good talk with somebody from the Department of Energy out of Washington DC that connected me with them through Joshua Jackson, or wonderful Joshua Jackson from West Liberty, who is always doing, you know, everything he can to try to bring more innovative technology and to immerse education. So I'm excited. I'll connect with Ken and talk a little bit about that. And hopefully, maybe there will be another partnership where we can bring some really cool opportunities to our kids here and for residents. That's it?
I have not received anything, but. I will state too that I've been in correspondence with Dick Brand from the Rural Trustees on finishing up the agreement and remind the council that I have said publicly after the mediation that I support and will encourage the council to vote yes on the twenty-eight E agreement. I know you need to see that and be able to review that before you make your decisions on it. But if this is approved, I want to remind the council that there are four members. The mayor is an automatic appointment. And then there are three other members of the committee, and those are appointed by the council. And so be thinking in terms of that, of the three, up to two can be sitting members of the council. All right, do we have any comments? Did I get everybody? Wait a minute, I stopped. Yeah, sorry.
No, I think you're up to.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, city manager, any correspondence or comments?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
City clerk.
The only thing I've had is people asking about the recycling and garbage schedules, and those were sent out in their bills. So that is available, and there's also some available if they need them in an accident call.
Good, okay. Okay, item two eight A, discussion and appropriate action by the city council on preparing and sending out an RFQ for engineering services for the city of West Liberty. So first up is discussion and then a motion and then consent vote. So is there a discussion?
I can't remember, Mayor, if we do this every year or if this is, so I know we've talked about it in the past.
Yeah.
But I don't know, Karen, do you remember, do you do this every year?
Uh, we have not.
Okay, so it's new, okay.
So I think it just hasn't been done in a while.
Yeah, um, no, I think it's a good idea to do this every so often with all of our contracts and things.
Other discussion?
Well, when was the last time, Leo, you recall, we did a?
Twenty years ago.
Oh, my goodness.
At least for engineering, for civil engineering. I don't know about on the, on the power side, so.
Well, they, they've been our engineers since I've been on council. That was prior to twenty sixteen, so.
Yeah.
I think they've, I think we've had both engineering firms for quite some time.
Yes.
Is there further discussion? Is there a motion?
What, I motion to approve.
Is there a second? It has been moved in seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, and we will move to item eight B, discussion and appropriate action by the city council on creating a resolution for extension of the N A L E O participation for council members Dominguez and Martinez. So first up is discussion.
Uh, I just want to say, you know, it's been a really, really good subscription. It's like a hundred dollars a year, which is nothing for a membership. They provide travel and, and housing for this past, we went, I went to Houston and learned a lot about how we can kind of choose policy to put in like building requirements and contracts so that our insurance rate can go down and so that we're better protected during like natural storm incidences. So there's a lot that there is there to, to learn. I am fine if the council wants to, you know, have other people on the council take part in that. I'm fine paying for my own. If like any of the other council members want to participate in that as well. And I know Omar did go to Arizona as well to a housing one that was really insightful for him as well.
The only thing that I was thinking about this, if, if you were open to this, I would like what I, the first mental health center that I worked for, when someone went to a continuing education, then in the next staff meeting, they gave some overviews of what they learned at the conference. And I think that kind of spreads out the great ideas that come out of these conferences. So I would be open to us adding that to the agenda.
Yeah.
Folks come back from that. To the point of other council members, I think that would take a separate resolution than, or I mean, action of the council rather than what's on the agenda for today, so.
And I may be interested as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there further discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
Well, I just want to clarify that this is to build the resolution. This is just discussion about whether or not we will move forward with renewing it, and then a resolution would come forward.
Oh, okay, thank you.
To approve that because that would then have to be approved for the payment portion of it.
Okay.
Um, can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
Um, and then in the future, like, like for whoever serves West Liberty, it's Latino majority city. So it'd be beneficial for any council member or city clerk or city manager to, to attend these, especially for the, to network and things like that. But for the city clerk, when you're looking at the membership payments, they do provide termed, like special payment options for people who are in certain terms. So just looking at that because it might save us some money, like in thinking about when we have new members come in, if we want to provide those memberships from day one, when they come in, it'll be cheaper for them to get like a three or four-year term.
Yeah.
Rate than doing the one hundred every year. It probably saves us like fifty or a hundred dollars, but it's still like per person, yeah.
Good. All right, so is there a motion to create a resolution for extension of the N A L E O participation for council members Dominguez and Martinez?
Uh, motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, and so the resolution will be created. Next up is resolution twenty twenty-five, one zero seven hyphen two zero nine, a resolution waiving building permit fees and providing staff labor at no cost on behalf of the Muscatine County Fairgrounds Activity Building Project twenty twenty-four. So first up, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion?
Now, I was trying to find more information, and I think at the end of the day, my eyes are just tired or something.
Why don't we turn to city manager Gertz to talk about what the idea is here?
So we did have a meeting on December thirtieth, and I think Adam is there in the audience with you folks, just in case if I cut out here. But we had a meeting with board president Steve Alt and Kelsey Myers, the manager for the fairgrounds. And we had a conversation pertaining to the, the activity building project, which looks to be nearly two million dollars. And this project will provide an increase for event opportunities for the Muscatine County Fairgrounds. And we are in a position as a city where we can offer sometimes tax increment finance or abatement opportunities. However, in this case, they're not seeking those. And so with that said, what we proposed is in order to participate in the support of their event project, that the city could look at waiving fees for the building permit and the inspection. We're still required to have the building inspected. You're still required to meet all of the regulatory building code in line. We would just waive those fees that they would be looking at in order to save them some cost. In addition to that, we also discussed the labor costs. So in order to help with the budget of that project, that the labor costs, we would provide that in-kind benefit to the, to the project as well to assist with their finances, to allocate more funds towards the building, since the city's not in a position where we can write them a donation check. But these are opportunities that we can provide to support that. And again, this is an economic development opportunity for our community because when the Muscatine County Fairgrounds provides these events, which bring, you know, participants and folks to our community, which in turn also generates some local option sales tax when they utilize our restaurants or, or gas stations, our retail as well. So that is why, where our recommendation is in support. I just would add that we did have the discussion that by allowing staff to work on the private property of the fairgrounds, we would want to make sure that we have a, an agreement and an understanding with the liability for any staff members that are working on the private property.
Lee, do you know the estimation of how much the building charge, the bill, the permit charge would be?
I do. I wanted to say it's going to be roughly, it's a percentage based on the project itself. And my laptop crashed today, so I can't access the building permits to give you that information. I can provide that though, once I'm able to get ahold of the permits when I'm back in the office. I want to say it's, I want to say it's somewhere in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars. Um, but again, I don't have all of that information because that requires the building inspector and for them to identify those costs and inspection.
It's not like an exuberant amount. That's what I kind of was asking, like five thousand, I think is a I mean, is a reasonable cost to donate that.
Yeah, the entirety is below, like the total of all done together is below eight thousand.
Okay, perfect.
Going to her point too, I mean, think of the business that it brings in town. I think we're very fortunate to have a fair in West Liberty because we've had it here forever, and anybody growing up around here has attended it for probably all five days. But, uh, yeah, I think to her point, the money that people that come into West Liberty during that event and with the fairgrounds, it's, it's not just that five days. I mean, we have school stuff down there. There's, you know, there's things throughout the year, anything we can draw attention to and bring in. I mean, with a new building, it definitely probably needs a new building down there at some point, so.
Would this be similar to the community center that's there that would allow like quinceañeras and weddings and stuff like that? Yeah, okay, good.
Um, the, I, the information can be located on the Muscatine County Fairgrounds website. Um, they provide the fundraising, the building plans. So if you have an opportunity, you can look to their website to get more information on those plans and the fundraising piece of it.
Yeah, on the website, we have all of the, everything that covers, you know, what the new building is going to look like, the layouts, all of those things. And if anybody has more or wants more information on the building, I mean, they're more than happy to reach out to me down at the fair. Oh, yeah, I should. Yes.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Yeah, so it, and it is, it's a two-point-five million dollar project is what we're looking at, just to give you guys an idea as to what that building is going to cost.
I just wanted to expand on Tim's point, or council member Prees's point that coming and spending and participating in our businesses during the fair and then coming back at other times because of exposure to what we have here in West Liberties. All right, is there further discussion?
I had two points with this. One of them was concerning the fees itself and what that total looked like, which I believe you all got answered.
Yes.
And I kind of am in agreement that that, to me, is not an exorbitant amount too much. My other point to this would just be, as much as I like to assist with this and understand that since we're not going other routes to provide assistance to the project and going more this way, is what would that mean in the future when someone comes forward saying, well, you removed all these fees for this organization, for this project, I am doing this, why can't you remove my fees too? And I guess if that's the route that the council wants to go, that's
I, I.
That I would want to be prepared for when that should arise.
Yeah.
I can, when you're ready, I can give you some information to that, council member Schultz and the rest of the council.
Go for it, Lee.
Okay, so I, we have provided this most recently with the school. Um, we provided some in-kind costs and trade. You know, again, that relates to the ELC property, but it has been practiced in the past. Our, our partnership with the Muscatine County Fairgrounds had, had, had fallen apart simply because we hadn't, had not tracked or had not provided any type of archive or written documentation. And, you know, with any nonprofit entity and another government entities that are, you know, coming to us with these projects, that's where we move forward and we create that archive, that documentation through resolutions. So we can provide, you know, the history on the practice, provide some consistencies and, you know, and identify, you know, the purpose. For example, is again, that partnership, the economic development relationship to our community that the Muscatine County Fairgrounds does bring. And if it is to be other organizations, then again, we would bring that as a resolution to council and identify so we can be consistent with, you know, this practice that we're proposing.
Thank you, Lee. Would we have an estimate for the amount of labor to be provided by the city? The amount of time that that would?
So. So what I, so my recommendation is similar to what we have done again with the school is that once we have, because we would track the labor time and the costs and council that at the end of the project or at the end of our participation, that we provide council and the fairgrounds a record of those costs so they have that information as well as we do, again, to do a better job of the historic data. So moving forward in the future, you know, there's a record of, you know, what was provided, how it was handled. So we get, moving forward in the future, you know, there's a record of, you know, what was provided, how it was handled. And um, as I've already communicated, you know, it's, it's setting that, you know, consistent process and um, the reporting, the information and the measurement of what we provide um, through those in kind, you know, pieces that we're not able to provide in cash dollars to the organizations.
I could see it as being um, attractive to, you know, philanthropists or future business owners if they knew there was an option to apply formally for like a building, you know, they maybe would choose to build in West Liberty. Um, if there was something like this available, so. I mean, I'm all for it, but I'm kind of with council members Schultz is like, perhaps we need to, if we approve this, we also need to work on making those kind of outlined rules, so other business folks can know that it, it's also maybe an opportunity for them, not that they would get automatically approved. But like just the kind of qualifications or requirements that council needs to review in order to, you know, consider it, I guess.
If I, if I can add to that, council member Dominguez, we already do provide that with developers, with businesses, through our economic development. Um, when we do those entry level conversations, we're identifying um, what, what can be provided. Um, council already has that through urban renewal programs, um, such as the tax increment finance, um, your downtown uh, grant assistance, um, the Iowa Economic Development Authority. So again, I mean, a lot of our private ownership, um, in businesses and those things, they have uh, more opportunities necessarily than right now with the Muscatine County Fairgrounds where that's where we're being um, creative is how we can provide that support since we're not able to offer. Um, we did have a conversation, um, and we'll, um, I'll plan on having this on my agenda with Ken Brooks, um, with We Lead. But we wanna take a look at the economic development matching grant. Um, because the Muscatine County Fairgrounds is located in our downtown district and is in the historic district as well. So um, there's further, you know, opportunities that we would like to identify through our partnership with them. Uh, but right now, this is what we were able to identify to get started with. I appreciate your input though, and yeah, we would always, most, most definitely you have to bring those type of agreements before council, before you can proceed.
I would view this to more, was like more of a special case too, because of the relationship that we've had with the fair, cause off the top of my head, I don't know how many years it's been in town, a hundred years, I mean.
Long time.
A long time, so I mean, I think anybody on the outside would look at this and wouldn't be like put off about, about uh, like money that were um, are not given there or they're given, not given us. Be, just because of the relationship that goes back, who knows how long, I, it's gotta be a hundred years, but anyway. So that's, that's my thought on it, so I know the open door that it could lead them to, but still, um, that would be a case by case thing anyway.
My, my impression is that this has a bit of a, a different parallel jump only because the trajectory of this being the fair um, is a avenue that works for the entire city. It benefits the city, it benefits the community, it benefits the county, and it benefits the state. So seeing that, I think that also is a way for us to work in a very creative or alternative means um, that we could offer besides doing it through the economic development avenue, which is another parallel, through We Lead where um, business owners get those um, benefits that we can offer like TIF and economic development grants and such. So I think this is just again, like a different parallel trajectory that we work with community needs, so that's how I see it.
Is there further discussion?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is uh, Resolution twenty twenty five zero one zero seven hyphen two zero eight. A resolution to approve A Estimate Number Fifteen for All American Concrete Incorporated for the Rainbow Maxon Street Improvement Project in the City of West Liberty. Uh, first of all, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All right, is there discussion?
Yeah, so Leo. Go ahead, go ahead.
You want me to go first?
Yes.
Okay, so this one, this is one I just wanna go back a little bit in history on. So this project, we started out on, and about halfway through the project, the mayor prior to you had decided he really wanted to push sidewalks, so he wanted to push the sidewalk and one that wanted to be done was a Columbus Street sidewalk. We knew it was a difficult sidewalk, we knew we had some, right away. We also knew we had some great numbers from All American on sidewalks and things like that, so the the task of B and K was see if All American would honor those numbers and extend their sidewalk stuff down the street. Well, there were things we still had to add, and so the change order, which is on the second page of this, third page, Stephen, was in the neighborhood of seventy one thousand dollars, Ryan, I'd um, change order number three. So that still was a very good price for what we did. The problem became, we didn't have the right of way at the time, so we had to acquire the right of way, which we did. But at that time, now you don't have All American honoring their schedule anymore. They did okay on the road part of the project. But on the sidewalk, we should have tied them down harder on the, on the schedule. And, and we thought they'd be able to finish the whole thing together, with the right of way not being available until later, didn't. But on the positive side, this project bid, bid, me, means bid at one point four four seven million. And we're probably gonna be closing it out next week or next council at one point four six, which is a increase of fifteen thousand dollars, which for a one point five million dollar project, that's really good. That's really good, not a little good, that's, nope, that's almost unheard of. And the reason for that, not, not bragging about us, because it's not B and K, but we had had problems on other roads with soft spots. We had a big problem where we didn't think we'd have one on naughty circle. But we had thought over in that area, it was by a big ditch the whole way, we thought we were gonna have soft spots in a lot of places. We didn't hardly have anything soft, so we put in a lot of rock, so we wouldn't have to have change orders. So that rock did not get used, it becomes a credit to the project, and it basically offset what we had for the sidewalks. So that's why the project came in, that one, that, that one point four six three million dollars, that included all, that included a hundred thousand dollars of sidewalks, or a sidewalk and other change orders, including the um, the, the, the painting that we had to do for the heated concrete and all of that, is, is in. That's, that's, the positive side was the cost, the negative side was the schedule. So I think, and Adam and I have talked, on the next project we go out, which will be this, a small one, it won't be as big a deal, but still, the west side, so we will make sure that the schedule part is hit hard in the specifications.
So.
That's easy to do, we just have to write it in there, you probably pay a little more upfront, but then you have the hook on them on the schedule, and we will do that at this time, for, for now on those. Now, go ahead, sorry.
So is it, it is completed, like, down to even the seating and all that?
It's done.
It's done, so all that would be left was, would be the retainage?
All that's left is the retainage, and there's one, the reason I didn't close it out, I don't know if you read that, the cover letter. Um, I talked to this assignment, who does the books, and she had a number in there that I thought that they were double accounting, so I took it out. And then she, Adam, I'm not Adam, uh, Ryan, the project manager was on vacation last week, didn't get back and didn't coordinate. I think we paid them for the item he was already trying to, I don't, I think, I don't think he was doing any securities, I think he just was adding something in that I thought was added, and I sent him email where him and I had agreed to something earlier. So I think it's gonna close out exactly at that price. Could, there's a six thousand dollar potential change, but I, I see it. I don't see him getting there.
Okay.
They'd, they'd have a fight with me until, they'd have to show me something.
Yeah, cause I was, I was wondering, because it says did not want to provide a completion certificate at this meeting, and that's basically because.
Because I haven't talked to Ryan yet.
Right, okay.
Once I talk to Ryan, I'll be solid.
Okay, so just to get it clear, so this change order
This is the, we're talking about Rainbow, this is the pay estimate for a hundred thousand dollars, right?
And then that's, that's all we have left for this project.
Then you have the retainage, which is still being held, which is three thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay.
Three thousand five hundred and sixty four dollars, that's all that will be left at that time. Then it's a hundred percent done, and then your two-year bond starts. And that's a critical part, because I don't like to try to do these close-ups too quickly, cause as soon as you do the close-out, their two-year bond starts. So what we tell them, and it's part of the state, state law, is that they have to have everything done and the city has to accept it before their bond starts. And there's, you know, there's stuff in the thing, you can't just not accept it if it's, if it's done right, yeah.
Mister Mayor, I was just gonna, I was gonna add for council. So what Leo is referencing is if you look in your, in your packet and you have a cover letter, and then attached with that cover letter is the breakdown uh, of the project, the costs, the pay estimates. And then on the, the final page, um, that identifies cost, retainage a- and the, and the budget, so if you hadn't, hadn't seen that, I just wanted to identify that. And that's pertaining to what he's communicating with that cost.
Yeah, I, it's, it's in here, I was just wanting to make sure I understood correctly. There's a lot of B and K stuff in our package.
And there's a lot of numbers. And this one is the fifteenth pay estimate, which, that's a lot of pay estimates, we don't have projects that go that long very often unless they go over two years, you know?
Large dollar amount project.
It, it is, but I mean, you know, the bigger thing is usually scheduled, the things that on road projects that kill schedule a lot of times is that, that right of way, right of way is a, a tough one, a lot of times.
Is there further discussion? It's been moved in second, and the deputy clerk will call a rule.
Oh, Mayor Roseanne McLaren?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're to, uh, item uh, A E Resolution twenty twenty five zero one zero seven hyphen zero uh, or two zero nine, uh, a resolution to accept change order number two uh, from uh, Northway Well and Pump Company uh, for well number two, phase one, well improvement project in the city of West Liberty. Um, when I think of well number two, I'm reminded of a long-term columnist for the Des Moines Register, Donald Call, and he said it wasn't an official, he would say every year, it's not an official um, World Series unless the New York Yankees are involved with it. I'm beginning to think it's not an official Kid City Council meeting unless we discuss well number two. So uh, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second, and we're now to discussion. So the, uh, did you?
No, I was.
Okay, so I, I, I did give a letter to Lee late today, and I think you all have the letter, but I can summarize it real quickly for you if you don't mind. I, I wanted to, to give this letter to Lee because she said, you know, it's been six years since this project started. That got me off guard, because I'm like, six years, I know the, I know it's gone long, but not that long, but well, so I wanted the history to go back again and say, okay, how did we get where we're at? So in two thousand nineteen, that's the six-year part, we were hired to do a study. And, and Northway had done for the city at the time, Northway had come in and done a pump test, we weren't involved with it. And they gave an estimate to the city and said, here's, we think you should put this, this new, this well on board, you know, and then here's couple of hundred thousand dollars, you can hire us to do it. And at the time, I, I remember telling the city, I didn't think so, I thought there's a lot of hoops to jump there with D and R to put a well on board like that anymore. It's not, it's not, not the way it used to be. So come to find out, we, the city hired us to then do an evaluation. So we started in on this evaluation, and we had decided at the time, with the city of all, we should send it to the D and R. The D and R is gonna have to approve it anyway when the plans and specs come, let's find out what they're gonna look at right away. They came out on site, they did not like, cause the well was in a powerhouse. They told us that they wanted us to um, go through and they um, Northway had already done a televising of the well. But it wasn't very well done, and it was done like in two thousand seventeen, this is two thousand nineteen. So the, the state didn't like, so they asked us, no, no, go through and have them clean the well, which they have to use brushes, and it's, you had to pay for it, it's an expensive process, I think it cost you twenty thousand dollars to clean, test the well, and we got that all done, they finally approved it, and they said, okay, you know, they were right, the casing's in pretty darn good shape. The bottom of the hole is in good shape, we think you can go forward. But before you do, we'd like you to water quality test because of where it's located. So we then had to hire somebody to come back in, well, and water quality test, and they were very specific on all their water. So finally, in October of two thousand twenty-two, I'm not trying to kill you with dates, I put them down already. They approved and said, okay, go forward with your plans and specs and build, build your well if you want to. So we came back to you and we said, we think you can do this, and it's gonna cost you, at the time, and this was twenty twenty-two, we told you it was gonna cost you um, five hundred and
Seventy-four thousand.
That's what it ended up costing, I think, so there it is, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
We said it was gonna cost them five, and this was back in, like, two thousand twenty, is when we told you that. So your other options were drill a another Jordan wall somewhere, which to do a Jordan wall nowadays, based on having to have piping and get it, you would not be able to put it near existing wells. You're talking two, two and a half million dollars. A salurian well is much shallower, you run into the same problems we're running into now, you don't get as much water out of a salurian well. And that still would cost you probably a million, a little over a million dollars to do that, probably a million and a half dollars to, to get that done. So the city, with my advice, said, well, if, if money's the issue, we can probably get by with fifteen years or so if we can get this well up and running. Then we started down the phase here, we put it out for bid, we only got one bidder, and the bidder was Northway. And when we did that, the other superintendent for the electric started saying, well, we have all kinds of roof problems, I didn't even know at that time they had roof problems. And then they just said, we better get this roof fixed before we finish that well, because other part of D and R's review is, we had to build a complete room that separated it off. But we didn't realize at first we had to do that. So then we said, okay, if we're gonna build this room, we have to fix a roof first, that wasn't part of the project. But again, it, it impacted schedule the whole time, and it kinda put us in that same bind.
And that was phase two.
That was, that was phase two, was that room, right. And we knew we had to do it after we had talked to D and R, so we had put the plans and specs together. Well, then we go out for bids, phase two went reasonably well. Phase one started in, we had a few problems early on, but in general, it was moving along. And right now, we're to the point where, when they were acidizing, and almost every Jordan well has to be acidized. What that means is they put an acid down that, it says acid, that's what everybody calls it, but it's, it can get into drinking water, it's not like, you know, hurt drinking water that bad, but what they usually do is acidize, and then they pump all the acid out out of the well, and then they use the well, so some might migrate out, but the, you know, it's not, not enough to be a problem, that's how all wells are done. Almost all Jordan wells. When we were acidizing this well, they noticed, well, three, I think it is, the waste, the one actually watered. When we were acidizing this well, they noticed well three, I think it is, the waste, the one after water treatment plant started, the pH started going up really fast on it, meaning that the groundwater, as it acidizes, the plumes are meeting somewhere down at the bottom. And that's not really a great idea. That's one of the reasons anymore. They don't let you put wells that close together. This one, they they were okay with because it's done. You have others that are close. The others probably impact each other also. But Northway was really nervous about do putting more acid down into that hole because it was going to your drinking water, even though your drinking water, you have caustic that can weaken weaken mitigate the the pH going up by adding more caustic to bring it right back down. But anyway, we decided, Northway says, I think we can be okay if we just use a pump for three hundred gallons per minute. So we went ahead and said, okay, if you think that's gonna work. It didn't. It got three hundred gallons a minute gets it there, but between going to the filters and going to the thing, they ended up saying they were about ten gallons per minute short of making it work. So what Northway decided now they can do is they can lower down the pipe and put a new pump in. They can return that pump because it really hasn't been used. And then we had, I had said, we should not be, you should not have to pay for additional labor for doing all that, but the pump would have cost you more anyway. So that was my thoughts and we put that together and sent it to you. So that's all I wanted to make sure you guys understood. Another thing on the cost on that, our our first cost was five thirty eight. Even if you approve this change order tonight, the costs are gonna be in the five seventy four range. So you're not, it's not crazy on cost. Schedule's been a nightmare and I'm not, I'm not defending anything on schedule. I'm not happy about it. I wish there were different things we would have done to be able to somehow, some way get the roof differently done and get get Northway. You know, we just didn't have, we didn't have the opportunities I wish we had.
Also, there was a pandemic that slowed everything down.
Pandemic, what that did is it it made for the well wells around here, you have certain controls. So we write specs and say, you shall use certain types of controllers for the well because they have to talk to other than. But when you do that, the contractor then says, I ordered it. It's gonna take six months to come in. You have to wait. So we've again, we don't, that's what I meant by I wish there were different things, but we didn't have the the handle to be able to beat on them the way we would like to.
Yeah.
So that's what, that's part of the problem with the schedule. So I I want, I was asking for approval of this change order. I want this well up and running. I want everything to work the way it's supposed to work and we're gonna get it one way or another.
Um, I I noticed that currently the the motor is a, what is it, a forty horsepower? So we're gonna up it to fifty. Now, does that mean we have to up the pump as well?
The pump and motor are together. It's a submersible pump.
Okay.
And they are, they are both having the 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 horsepower of the pump has to be a fifty horse. The good thing is that we had already oversized the MCC motor, the MCCs for the power, so we didn't have to do anything with the power. One of my questions to them was, what if we went back and reacidized? And and believe me, I've learned a little bit about acidizing because I had never run into this acid getting into drinking water before and it threw me for a loop, you know, I'm like, what do what do we do, you know? Then I I said, well, what if maybe it's not as big a deal if we we let them reacidize? And that happens. Coroville, I did a well for them, brand new well. We had to acidize it three different times to make it work right. But Northway wasn't sure that was gonna really work that well because of the the small casing that we're given here. And then they asked that um because we only have a fifty horse, they thought we'd have to go to sixty, which meant we'd have MCC problems. So we think this fifty horse at three hundred forty is gonna work and we're we're moving forward.
So go ahead.
My my question was, and maybe it doesn't work like this, but you said that there they will return the previous pump, it was the three hundred. Is there something in here? I skimmed over it, but.
It didn't show, he didn't show us.
What's our credit for that?
He he said he gets a credit for it, but he didn't tell me what it was. I can find out. He did tell me he got credit for it.
Okay, because in in the end, the amount that we're talking is just under ten thousand, correct?
That's right.
So I just wanna make sure.
And then B and K and Northway are gonna split the the cost of the labor because truthfully, if I'd have had my if I'd have had experience with that, I probably would have told them to um keep acidizing right then and shut your wells down here. Use a different well and see what happens. I don't know if it would have worked or not, but I wish I'd have made that decision. So I feel like I'm responsible for some of it. And I really feel like Northway, they told the city ten different times, they could get four hundred gallons a minute. I've got about ten different things. So he's they should be on the hook for for any of that labor also.
Okay, I just was concerned. I didn't want them to turn around later and say, we're gonna have to up that because the the pump isn't meeting the needs to.
Right.
Okay, we're having a well party in February. Whether or not it's done or not.
I'm buying the beer. No, man, give you a beer.
City manager Gertz, anything to add?
She's gonna put me in the well.
But I I I would like to see if there is going to be an impact on that uh change order two amount if we do get a credit.
He says it's already in there is what he has told.
Oh, so after the credit, then that's the the nine seven is the finished amount.
But he should be able to give us this.
He should be able to tell us exactly what it is.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Adam, anything to add since uh we don't have the city manager?
She's on here.
Oh, okay, so you can hear me. Okay, anything to add?
Um, well, Adams, Adams, welcome to add any comments as well. Um, I thank you, Leo, for putting that information together. Um, as I communicated, um, I had a meeting with our with Adam and the water department staff and um, we went through the the project and, you know, as we've already discussed, I mean, there's been a lot of variables um over the past um six years. And given the fact that most of the council members and the mayor are not familiar with the entire project history and likewise with our staff that's newly um came into to the project as well. Um, we had some items that um staff and myself wanted to identify and also put that before you so you had the history and all the information um and where we were at with this project. And um and I certainly don't want to jinx this and say, you know, the light is at the end of the tunnel or in the well, but most importantly, um, we are within financial means of this. Um, I think that moving forward, if if this step does not successfully work and and have the well operational, um, Leo and I have discussed that that's gonna be a different type of conversation moving forward on the project. But at this time, we're vested. Um, we know where we're at with it. And um we support uh V. String Kim's recommendation um on the change order to move forward. And Adam, you're welcome to add any anything to that if you'd like to.
I think Leo's pretty much said it all of the history of it, all that stuff.
We did have a meeting, I think at the last. We had Harn at the meeting and we had the integrator who's Jetco, who's your integrator all the time. Again, we sole source Jetco. So they're working for Northway, but we told Northway in our contract, you shall use Jetco. And I think that integrator, I'm not giving him any bad terms, but I think he's really good. It was not pleased with the Harn people. They basically did not open their mouth at the meetings. And I believe that was because they didn't want to do any type of liability whatsoever. So but the integrator for Northway, he was very confident that if we get ten or ten or so more gallons in there, we make this thing work, so.
Because um because the nature of the size, being that it's smaller, you still want it to come back and say, oh, now we gotta bump it up again.
I understand.
Okay.
And with the with the bigger amount of public, does that go deeper into the well too?
Yes. And that's all part of that.
Is there further discussion? Very none. The deputy clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Friesick.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember McLaren.
Yes.
Last item uh on the list of eight is uh item uh F. Resolution twenty twenty five zero one zero seven hyphen two one zero resolution to approve reimbursement for the Iowa Economic Development Downtown Housing Grant for three seventeen uh North Spencer Street Project Award Contract and the number twenty two hyphen A P R D H hyphen zero six zero in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars paid to Brook Ventures LLC. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Um, I had a question. So usually when we do this, there's like a check and we see like the amount that they've invested and now we're we're matching that. Is this different? Can you explain that, Ken or somebody?
This is a different program. This is not a city program.
Okay.
Through the state of Iowa. This is a grant we applied for and received a couple of years ago. There's one time overfunded program uh that was designed to bring housing into rural downtown areas. So this project there um is kind of catty corner from the library on Spencer Street and added two brand new apartments to historic building downtown. So they have met the requirements for the grant itself. Um, the project is complete. And so uh city manager can help explain the the city side of this, but it's my understanding that the city has to approve the reimbursement before the city then can work to collect um the grant dollars from the state.
Got it.
City manager Gertz, anything else to add?
So um this resolution um was a recently added requirement from what's known as the R S M project managers for this grant. Um, that is um the reason why I included um all of the history um and the grant um award application process. Um, prior to this, the city had already agreed um the payment of the two hundred thousand dollars through reimbursement from the state. Um, but recently, um, the federal government as a part of this updated and is now requested that we provide, the city provide a resolution uh for the the contractual payment. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars has already been paid to the developer. And now um we are down to the final uh reimbursement processing of eighty thousand. And so um with the resolution that provides the uh government, then their um record of document, um, the city is making the payment on that so we can continue to work towards getting our reimbursement from um the state for the grant. I will tell you that this grant has been a lengthy administrative, complex item, and I'm trying to be as kind and politically correct as I can with this. Um, the mayor has been brought into a lot of the conversations with the state. Um, I've identified the continual change of requests um to get it finalized. I mean, we should have been able to finalize this several months ago, but it continues to be a lot of administrative work um uh for myself primarily. Um, Ken has done as well as assisted with um as much as he can possibly do, but a lot of it has um taken some time from my place to work with them on it. I recently submitted it last Friday and um I received emails where they requested again yet even more information. Um, there is a blog um with other communities that are participating in this very grant. And I guess the good news is is that we're all in the same boat of frustration and um the inefficiencies and and changing of the course as you're going through the process. Uh, but it doesn't change the fact that um, you know, there's still the work that has to be done in order for the city to recoup their their uh the funds that we've already um expensed out to the developer. But again, I appreciate Scott Brook uh of Brook Ventures. I mean, he's um done a lot of work and has stayed right there with me um to their additional requests. So so again, I'm appreciative that we have a developer that has been understanding and and worked hard to meet each of their changing requests during the process.
Excellent. Are there further questions or uh comments from the council? If not, the deputy clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Friesick.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember McLaren.
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Item nine on.
Sorry.
I thought so.
Siri wanted to vote too.
All right, uh, item nine adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed may. Council meeting is adjourned.